Good morning and welcome to the Greenfield Public Schools Policy Subcommittee Meeting. Calling the meeting to order at 11:01 a.m. Elizabeth and Eve, are you here?
Yes.
Amy Parity, are you here?
Here.
And I Glenn Johnson Musad am here. So we have a quorum. We are recording the meeting. It will be, I think, available on GCTV and we also recognize that anyone is able to record any meetings. Is anyone from the public recording this meeting? Okay. First item on our agenda is a public comment. I see one member of the public here. Would you like to speak during public comment, Katie? And not hearing a response, I'm gonna say you're listening and not caring to comment.
Hey, did.
Can anybody hear me?
Oh, we can.
We can hear you now.
Okay, good. My video isn't working on this particular computer. I wasn't sure about the audio and I didn't want to disturb you, so I will unmute, I will mute myself unless I feel like I need to talk.
Okay, and are you speaking during public comment time right now? You've got three minutes if you want it.
Um, well, I'm not really sure what will come of this meeting, but of course I'm here because of my son, Michael Pierce, who homeschools, has an IEP through the public school system. I have a great relationship with Student Services I have for years, and he has played sports with Greenfield Middle School and High School for a few years now. So I am obviously here on behalf of him. Hoping that we can come up with, you know, some, something so he can participate in the sports like he has, because if he can't, this is, you know, his, he's a, an athlete. This is what his major strength is, and obviously, as his advocate, it's very concerning to me that he can't play. So, and, and other homeschoolers. So we, we sign liability forms every time I sign him up at family ID. I've signed, you have his health insurance, you have his birth certificate, you have all his information. Not only that, when I homeschool, I go through Greenfield Public Schools in order to get his homeschool year approved, which it does every year, and I send in my end of the year report. Obviously, I pay taxes. I just feel hurt that he can't continue playing sports. It is it makes me feel, and him just let down by the, the public school system, and I, and it's, it's been kind of upsetting for us. But especially for Michael, and of course, he's the most important thing to me and his success. So that, that is my public comment.
Great. Thank you, Katie. And can you just for the record, say what town you live in?
I live in Greenfield, Massachusetts.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay. All right, the next item on our agenda is to schedule our next meeting. This, in my mind, connects to our cellphone policy, which is item six, because I'm hoping by the next meeting, we will have a draft of a cellphone policy. So I would like to schedule our meeting for an evening time when people in the community could come and share feedback during the public comment period on that policy and have greater access than many would during workday. So could we look to find a weeknight when we could have our next policy subcommittee meeting?
I could do something the week of September 26.
All right.
Keep in mind, please, parent conferences are that week.
Oh, okay.
Yep. So should we avoid that week? It sounds like, yeah, that's also the week before Albert and I have our in-person celebration of our wedding.
Oh.
Oh.
What about the week after, the first week in October, or is that too close to the next standard PMP meeting that we usually would have?
It works for me later in the week, like I could do, I could do Thursday night, October 6.
Yeah, that would work.
If you folks want to meet without me, but I'm not able to do that, like.
Are, are you talking about doing it remotely or in person?
I think remotely.
Okay, and what time would we start?
Um, well, we, I guess we could talk about that together. I'm available the whole night. I'm, I'm weighing in my mind whether it might make more sense to put it off to a later date when Christine might be able to be there. To me, it's not particularly urgent. We have a seems that we have the implementation of a plan for cellphones for this year, but we want to have some guidance for the future. So I'm okay putting it even farther out if it means that we can all be there.
May, may I?
Well, and Thursdays are just in general really tough for me. It would, remote I could do, but it's not ideal on a Thursday really ever. So I would appreciate if we could find a different date as well.
Sure.
How do you guys feel about Wednesdays? I could do any Wednesday, but September 21st.
I can't do Wednesdays. Well, actually, sometimes I might be able to do a Wednesday. Let me see, the Wendell Select Board meets first, third, and fifth Wednesdays, we meet on the second Wednesday. So sometimes on a fourth Wednesday, I could pull it off.
And I can never, yeah, Wednesdays are bad for me.
But Tuesdays.
Tuesdays are a little better. Yeah, most Tuesday nights I can do.
All right.
Can I just share a little tidbit as we're looking to schedule, and especially based on Glenn's statement about pushing it out? I have a number of dates that are being submitted to both you, Glenn, and Elizabeth, and Jean about scheduling the
redistrict.
But our the community meetings to reschedule, to, to talk about the MedStack. And there are about nine dates between now and the end of October that we're going to be throwing out to you folks to talk about scheduling these community meetings. That's actually my agenda for today. So does it make sense? Are you open to scheduling those first and then doing this?
We could potentially pencil in a couple of dates and then see which ones get taken by the by the redistricting conversation, and then we, maybe we'd still have one that would be left for policy. If not, we could certainly go back to the drawing board, but.
Just wanted to throw that out because that's, obviously, I know that's a priority for the committee is to get those done, so.
Yep, always a lot of moving pieces and busy people with competing calendars, but if we persist, we can, and I think it would be very worthwhile to get, to make it a priority to get community input on that very relevant policy. So so what if we pens, well, I guess we probably don't want to do the night before school committee meeting.
I don't mind doing that if everyone is available and we want to try and find a Tuesday. I, I don't mind doing that. I don't know how anyone else feels. I'm typically a glutton for punishment.
Oh, okay, because the 11th is wide open, 11th of October is wide open for me.
I can't do September 13th because I've got going to the fair with the kiddos. But the 20th I could do.
October 11.
October 11th.
I can only do early.
What's early?
Uh, 4:30 or 5:00.
October 11th I can't do.
All right, let's go further out.
October 18th I could do.
I could make it work.
I I'm sorry, that, that is the one Tuesday night. I guess it's the third Tuesday of the month that I can't ever do.
How about October 4?
October 4, let's see.
I have a, a 5:00 p.m. thing, but I could do 6:00 or later.
It's Yom Kippur Eve, so no, we can't do that.
Okay.
Um, all right. Let's look at November.
The 8th. Or the, the first would also work early.
Does it being Election Day matter? I don't think it does, November 8.
That I mean, it doesn't matter to me, but it might matter to other people. I don't know if it would impact attendance if we're looking for, it, something like that, I don't think typically impacts attendance at a meeting, but.
I don't think it would, if we're doing a virtual meeting.
I can do November 8.
All right.
I can too.
And should we look for one other date in case the redistricting foils our November 8 plans?
That's not one of the dates that's on the list right now. So I say grab it.
Yep, all right, great. I'm glad it's not on the list. Excellent. All right. Thank you. Well, I'm glad we put it as an agenda item and gave it the time.
What time, Glenn?
That's a good question. What works, what works best for Amy and Elizabeth? I feel like you're both a good sample of busy parents who might want to be invested in this.
It would either have to be early or it have, would have to be late, but anytime around like 7:00 or 8:00 is kind of typically dinner time.
Yeah.
I don't mind doing something late, like at 8:00 or something, but I mean, I feel like more parents would probably tune in then. I mean, as uncomfortable as it is to have to be late, that seems to be, you know, people will be done with dinner and they'll be, you know, at least able to coordinate their bedtimes and, you know.
How does 8:00 work for you, Amy, in your world?
I'm, I'm usually in bed by 8:00, unless it's a school committee meeting.
That's so early then. We need Amy while she's still away.
I mean, I would prefer like, like, you know, 6:00 or 6:30. I know, I, I know there's no good time, but.
Yeah. Um, all right, let's go. I say let's go for 6:00. What do you think, Elizabeth? Can you make that work?
I think that's fine. I don't think as many people will come, but I mean, you know, there's no, there's no good time. Like Amy said, there's no good time unless it's late, maybe. That's also difficult.
Yep. Okay, um, the other thing we can do, I mean, if we want to increase our flexibility and openness to community feedback, we could actually sandwich the discussion. We could do we could do a public comment, then deliberate about the policy, and then do another public comment session. People can give us feedback on what they've heard, or if they're just showing up for the first time, we're not going to be, I think, sealing the deal on the, on the policy that night. So why don't we experiment with that? We'll do 6:00, we'll do, we'll do a sandwich of public comment.
That's great. Good idea.
Okay. All right, well, that may have been the hardest thing we had to do. We'll see, we're not done with difficult topics, but scheduling is not fun. That's all I wanted to say. All right, next topic is temporary options for homeschool athletes. Do you want to set this up for us, Christine?
So the school committee voted last year to change the homeschool policy. The, the version that was brought to the school committee and voted was done with legal counsel providing guidance on it, and the decision was made by the committee to vote on a policy that did not include language about homeschool students participating in school day activities or extracurricular activities. So what the issue appears to be at this point is that as Katie referenced, for some reason, the signups for athletics allowed people who were not registered in the district to sign up to participate, and there was a little bit of a communication glitch between the athletic director and the information getting out to families. So we had, at this point, I believe, three students who began a season for athletics, even though their homeschool and typically, and, you know, by your policy would not be eligible to participate. But the, you know, the discussion is does the committee want to have a, a solution for this current athletic season? Given the fact that the families were able logistically to sign up for the season. You know, that, that's one question is what do we want to do for the immediacy because we're in it? And then, does the committee want to maintain the current language of the policy, or do you want to revisit the elements of extracurriculars? The, one of the concerns that rose to the administrative level with the prior policy language was that students, the language in the policy allowed students to basically choose any activity during the school day to come into the building and participate in educational activities and leave, even though they were not registered, which creates liability issues, what we discussed prior resource issues, all of that. So that's, that was really the impetus for bringing the policy to the committee for revision to begin with. But this element of the extracurriculars, particularly athletics, is, you know, the two-fold piece. Is there any option at this point? And then what does the subcommittee want to do going forward?
Okay. Let's start with the motion. I'm wondering if someone would want to make a motion that we we make an exception to the policy to allow students who register to continue in athletics this season.
I'd make that motion.
Is there a second?
I guess I'll second it, but, and yeah, I just need more information about what we're actually motioning, but I'll second it so we can discuss.
Yeah.
Okay, great. So I, I think that the the problem that we've been asked to weigh in on is that even though we have a policy that says that homeschool students can't register for our athletics, they were allowed to register for athletics and have in fact already begun participating in the sports. And I guess one reason why I would vote for this is that I think it's, it was really the responsibility of, of our gang to, to implement that in a way for people to understand it and be able to make their decisions about athletics based on our policy, but instead, they were allowed to kind of sign up anyway. And now the season's in progress. It's hard to change teams. It's hard to figure out another plan. It can really have an impact on a student's athletic arc. One season that gets disrupted if, if a student, even at, even at this stage was asked to, to leave a team hugely disruptive. So that's why I'm supportive of allowing students who were able to register this year to continue with their sports.
So you're talking about like, I'm sorry, Elizabeth, go ahead.
Oh, I was just wondering, Glenn, real quick, if you could tell us what, where we can find the policy on this. I just want to get it in front of my face. Was it attached and I didn't see it? I'm sorry, I'm trying to look it up.
I don't think it was. It was put on the agenda fairly last minute because of the nature of when it came up, but we can certainly pull it up if we go to our policy.
Yeah, I'm on the policy manual. I was just wondering what the yeah, is it? What section is it?
It's probably, what's the student section? Is that J? It's probably in J, but.
I'm scrolling down.
There.
Elizabeth, are you on your phone or on a computer?
I'm on my phone.
Oh, I don't know.
Yeah, it is section J. I'm just trying to figure out which one it is.
Hold on, I'll let you know.
Thank you.
It is I H B G.
I H B G, oh, okay. H B G, ah, okay, thank you. All right, got it open. I just want to make sure that I'm got it in my mind.
Let's give folks a minute or two just to reconvene themselves with that, if you want.
Thank you, Glenn.
Sure.
So this is just homeschooling business and say anything about this athletic program in conjunction with it.
The that's somewhat the issue is that there's no allowance for participation in extracurricular school-based.
I see, okay. But you had said that the school committee had voted to not allow homes.
The revision to the policy removed language that allowed it.
Okay. I see. Okay, all right, I got it. I'm sorry, I had to get it in there. Okay. So we used to allow it. We're not allowing it anymore due to the revision, but students were allowed to sign up, and that was a glitch, and now we're revisiting, okay?
Yeah, well, right now, we're just looking at the, making it, the possibility, making an exception for students who have already registered, who wouldn't have been allowed to register if the policy was being implemented.
So they'd be able to finish the year out, but not next year. They wouldn't have access next year.
I think we might be better to consider the season.
I see.
Because there's distinct fall, winter, and spring athletic seasons, and athletes have to sign up separately for each athletic season.
Okay, so we're considering the fall season.
That's, that's the season that the current homeschool athletes have signed up for is the fall.
Amy, did you have a question or a statement?
Yeah, I'm just, I guess I'm looking for the motion to be a little more specific. So we're talking about it sounds like a waiver to allow students who are participating, homeschoolers who are participating in fall sports to continue only for this fall season, and that would be the end of homeschool students participating in sports in the Greenfield schools. Is that, it, it sounds like that's what has come up so far.
That was the intent of the motion, yeah, and that.
So I think we got to clean up the motion. So could I friendly amend and rewrite it?
Absolutely, yeah.
So I make a friendly amendment to specify the a waiver for homeschool student eligibility in fall 2022 sports. And no further participation in athletics. I don't know if we have to go that far, but I'm just trying to tighten it up a little bit.
Elizabeth, do you accept that amendment?
Yeah, I do. I'm wondering if the door is completely closed to discussing it further in the future about allowing them to participate in the future, or is that something that is just absolutely a no?
I think that's the next part of this discussion. So the first is addressing the current thing, and then the second is discussing whether we will revisit and or revise our policy.
Okay, well, yeah, I'm on board with Amy's tightening up. I think that makes sense.
Great. Any other comments or questions before we vote? All right, Amy.
Yes.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
And I mean, yes. So that passes unanimously.
Thank you. I will communicate by letter with the three. To the best of my knowledge, I'll just say this, I will communicate my letter with all of the homeschool students who are currently registered for athletics, and then administratively, we will address process protocol and notice going forward.
Great, thank you, Christine. Thanks for bringing this to us, and I'm glad we were able to offer some relief to the students who might have been negatively impacted. So the next piece is whether we wish to re, re, I guess essentially reconsider and or revise our, our policy on this. I think for purposes of discussion, I'd like to start with if anyone's willing to make a motion that we not reconsider and revise this policy.
I would make a motion to keep the current homeschool policy as is.
And I will second that. So discussion.
How many students are we talking about? How many students typically utilize the athletic program that are homeschooled? Do we know?
I don't know off the top of my head.
Is it a financial burden for them to access the athletics for the district?
I think the discussion that was had when the policy was originally modified was around student, I'm making a broad statement, and certainly Glenn and Amy can correct me, but my recollection of the conversation is what the issue of students not registered in the district accessing district resources. So it was the broader conversation, not necessarily just related to athletics when it was discussed.
That's exactly how it was presented. We did not in any way go through any sort of laundry list of different types of participation. It was intended as a very broad policy that clarifies what, how participation is, well, that participation isn't really happening in extracurricular stuff. Sorry, I'm not being very articulate, but that's my recollection. It was more about correcting some previous practices that were put the district in a, in a different situation than we would like to be in. For example, having homeschools, one of the examples we were given was having students, students were able to actually take classes during the school day that were homeschool students, but then were accessing curriculum within the school itself. And those were things that were happening for many years, and they were part of the culture for many years. And it was in consultation with legal counsel that we decided to make the changes. That's my recollection of all of it from what feels like was so long ago, but was like basically a year ago.
So, but is there, do, do people have a problem with not allowing the, I mean, with allowing the homeschool kids to access athletics? Because that seems like kind of a special thing. You're not saying like, yes, you can take our Chromebooks home. I mean, athletics are a specific specific thing that, you know, not everybody has access to depending on where they live or what's going on. So I'm just wondering if, if it might increase equity to allow the homeschool students to be able to participate in the sports programs here.
Well, but if you are homeschooled, you likely don't have access to a chemistry lab either.
Right, but they're not asking to be in the classrooms. They're asking to be a part of the district's sports community on the field and these teams. I just, I don't see why we wouldn't want to foster that kind of community spirit and allow them to take part in that. I mean, if it, if it's a whole thing, like you just cannot participate, or if there's a, you know, we can choose what might be important and worthwhile to allow them to participate in. I, I would think that it would be a wonderful step towards including the community and allowing the homeschool kids to be a part of the school sports program, especially since it doesn't seem like there are a lot of them. There's only a few. I don't see why we should deny them access. Who said that?
I pose a question. Again, it's a subcommittee decision, but Elizabeth, I could anticipate that families of enrolled students would be concerned if their athlete was cut from a team because they hit the numbers of participants and homeschool athletes were on the team. I could see that that would be a counterpoint to what you just raised.
Okay. Yep. That makes sense.
Yeah. And I guess in my own mind, I just don't see our school system as being an à la carte menu where people can decide, oh, I don't want my student in your classes, but I do want them in your sports. Like, you know, there's, there's benefits to being part of the Greenfield Public Schools. Join and, and send your kids to the school. You know, but yeah, I just, I, I think we don't need the administrative burden of having to manage students who aren't even enrolled here. And yeah, so that's why, and we did discuss the other pieces. We did discuss and deliberate about this very recently. I'm not very interested in reopening policy discussions every time it has a consequence for some families that, that they don't like, you know, that's the nature of our policies is sometimes not everyone likes it. So. Any other discussion before we vote? All right, let's vote. Elizabeth?
No.
Amy? Oh, you're on mute.
Sorry. Yes.
And I mean, yes. So we'll keep, we will not reopen that discussion. Okay.
One second. I just want to. Got to make my minutes right. Okay. I am up to the minute with me.
Oh, excellent. Great.
Laugh at the pun.
So what came up at some previous meetings is that we've been in this process of overhauling our policies that was interrupted by the pandemic and other issues. And we've made some starts towards getting that process going again, but in the process of doing so, we realized that none of us were here at the launch of that project that was assisted by MASC, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. And so we invited and very grateful for Liz Lefon from MASC coming to talk to us about the program that we've been involved in and giving us an orientation to it. So thank you, Liz.
Of course, I have a truck just driving by the front of my house.
Right, really? Right at that moment, of course.
So, well, of course, I'm happy to appear at any of these policy subcommittees where sections are being reviewed. You know, that's part of the contract. So in, I'm going to give you the nutshell version. My predecessor actually engaged the school committee at the time in signing the contract for policy review. I stepped in and took over the work. What happens in a comprehensive policy review is this. MASC collects from the district. Every document that contains policies, like your policy manual, like student handbooks, like contracts, like your budget. And then creates a compilation of policies, your policies along with MASC's model policies. In many cases in Greenfield, policies were the same. Sometimes they were similar where Greenfield had added a Greenfield specific language. And in some cases, the Greenfield policies themselves were, were quite old and, and and out of date, frankly, you know, not up to, to speed with current laws and regulations. So we started meeting in September of 2018. And the process was took a long time, you know, to get through sections. And when we did sections went to the committee and they kind of, you know, the, you, you know, the background. They kind of just cycled around for constant sort of rewording. And there was some resistance to change whether or not it made great sense in terms of liability issues or not, and whether or not you were meeting current state guidelines in areas that you need to be in compliance. Then the pandemic hit and the work came really to a screeching halt. And since Christine's been on board, we've had many, many policy discussions. She was keen on understanding my role in this versus her role and the school committee's role. And so my role is simply now that we have all these combined sections is to go section by section, policy by policy with the policy subcommittee to answer any questions you have, for me to describe any changes that must happen according to law or regulation. Certainly to present best practice in terms of many policies. I think we had, I'm glad to hear you got section D through because that was an area where best practice had gone astray in some cases. And in fact, I think Christine, you're going to see a whole new policy newsletter coming out in the next probably few days to a week from MASC with some revisions to section D policy. And that is, yeah. So that's specifically related to some changes that DESI is requiring to how things are accounted for. That's not because we decided to change our minds on how things look. That was DESI really hitting some districts pretty hard in some of the reviews and audits they were doing.
I might still suggest, given the fact, how broad are the changes in section D, Liz? Because
They're not, they're not broad. I think that in some cases, language has been adjusted. In some cases, language has been eliminated, which I'm sure that you'll be a fan of. And in some cases, new legal references are added.
So I guess my question is, does it make sense? Next week on Wednesday, the committee was going to have sections D and E to vote. Does it make sense to vote the full sections and then to revise individual policies?
Absolutely. Yes. Because, yes, because the, yes, there's, there are a few policies. Well, there's a good number of policies, but not up against the entire section. You can certainly make the revisions from there. And it would also make sense. I think in terms of this committee, understanding policy and policy work, right? So this is, this is how policy can change and why it changes. And where we run up sometimes against a little bit of catch-up work is when DESI decides that things shall be done differently and they create regulations around that, but they don't necessarily communicate it with us. And then we hear from districts who, you know, have been cited for not doing things according to DESI regulations that we never really knew about. So Tracy Novick, who is in fact a licensed school building administrator and a field director for Central Massachusetts has gone through each and every policy in section D to be sure that school committees who are using those policies are not going to get exceptions from DESI as they come through and look at policy manuals and how things are being accounted for. Does that make sense? I'm not a finance person. I'm gonna, Tracy came into Greenfield with me when we went through policy, section D. I understand how the policy piece works. She was able to provide good explanations around best practices and why some of the things that were written into policy in Greenfield at the time were, were not great ideas and how they tied the hands of administration in terms of getting the work done.
Yeah.
So does this subcommittee, are you folks good with the full section D going to be voted? And then we can just amend the individual policies that come up through the policy advisory?
Absolutely.
Yeah. You're not going to see NMS change. It's just a lot of clarification. Again, designed by the department to keep us all on our toes.
Thank goodness. This is the only thing they ever change. One thing, Liz, that I think I've noted in the Greenfield policy manual that I think you and I have, have also communicated about is the difference between required policy, recommended policy and suggested policy. And my initial review of what we have, I think we have a lot of suggested. And I think that's something, it might be good if the policy subcommittee thinks about, you know, if it's something that you could have, but you don't have to have. How much could haves do you want to embed in the policy manual?
That's right. And so in terms of that kind of policy, what you want to think about is obviously if there's a legal reference, that's a policy you need to have. If it's just a broader policy statement that you oftentimes see in the beginning of sections, that's where you want to decide, is this really, you know, does Greenfield need to make this statement about policy or do, are we chucking it? In fact, as I told Christine, that the current group of field directors at MASC have been meeting almost monthly to go through sections of policy. And we're eliminating a lot of that as we go through our reviews. Like, why are we asking districts to do that? We've, they've already got enough on their hands. Let's stick to what they're required to do, right?
Okay. Let's see, Elizabeth and Amy, any questions for Liz?
Also, I guess I'm, I haven't quite, I got a little bit sidetracked on the D section there. So as we go through the sections and complete changes and they get through your, your committee. So I make edits to the policies as we're working. In this case, I'm, I'm, I feel pretty confident that Christine's going to be doing the same thing and we'll be, we'll be making sure that our edits jive. I always keep a marked up copy, but my marked up copy goes to Anne Marie Martin in our office who then formats it and, and gets it ready. We send you back a cleaned up copy typically to go through the board. What we had started to do in Greenfield specifically because it was taking so much time to get through school committee was that I was sending my marked up copy to the chair so that when a chair was asked questions, the subcommittee chair, she at the time would have had these marked up pages and would have been able to fully explain what the changes were. At some point, internally at Greenfield, that marked up copy got distributed among members. And I think it was probably more confusing than helpful at that time. So we can certainly continue to do that. I think in terms of sending policy back to the full board, sending the clean copy is always the best option. If the chair wants that marked up copy, should there be specific questions, you can refer to it and answer them with clarity. I'm happy to do that as well. When the full manual is completed, Greenfield at the time, and I don't know how the payments have rolled out because that's a piece that somebody else handles. I'm sure I could get answers to those questions, but at the time, Greenfield also signed up for policy 21, which means that MASC would then take all those finished sections, get them ready to be uploaded into the world wide web. Once that all happens, we would send you the live link to your policy manual online. We would also post that link on our website online. And as part of that, there's a yearly maintenance fee, which I think is now at $950 a year. It started at $900 a year, some, I don't know, 15, 20 years ago, when we started doing this work. So it's really just the cost of actually paying the host what they require us to pay them. You then, at any time you make a change in policy, I think for me, the key piece of this is anytime you make a change in policy, you just send that document off to us. We make sure it gets uploaded as quickly as possible. It, it doesn't change your link, but when somebody clicks on your link, that updated policy is there. Nobody on your end is tracking, who did it go to? Did it get uploaded? Are the legal references live and correct? You know, that kind of thing. We sort of manage keeping your policy manual online updated for that, for that yearly fee. And I know Christine's had some concern about how all those policies stay updated accurately online as you currently host it yourself.
Yeah. The, one of the questions, Liz, as you were just talking, I've actually been making the clean copies. So that might be a discussion between you and I. So just because it makes no sense for both of us to be making clean copies. So we can figure that out.
Yep. I mean, certainly that's part of what I'm, I'm, we're here to do. And it does make no sense for you to spend your time doing that kind of work, Christine. You have many more important things to do.
Anything else, Liz, before we do questions?
I think that's it unless there are questions. And it's something I haven't covered that I can answer.
Elizabeth, Amy, anything? All right. I have one question. Maybe it's more of a, I think I often am asking these kind of meta unanswerable questions. But if the, if DESI requires certain things of schools, why does every single school need to update their personal policy on it? I mean, if it's essentially required or law or regulation, why, why does everyone have to bring it through this whole policy process? Because we're just going to have to put it in anyway.
You are going to have to put it in anyway, but you have a policy manual that tells your community what you value. In many cases, home instruction is something that varies by district. For example, there are some districts that allow kids to come in and take enrichment classes only, or AP classes only, or only sports. I haven't heard of too many districts that allow class, homeschool students to just come in and take any class they wish to take. Of course, home, homeschool districts that have homeschool students are required to provide services under the IEP that exists. That is district specific. And there are other policies that will come up against that look like that as well. You're required by DESI to have a policy manual. I don't know if you know that or not.
I guess.
Because when they come in and look at, you know, sort of how your district is operating for the wide variety of reasons that they sometimes do so. Special education, for example, you're required to have policies related to how your special education program operates and how students are treated and how students are disciplined, right? You're required to have policies on how all students are disciplined. You're required to have a policy on homeschool. You are required to have a section on your financial, how your finances operate in your district. The sections that are sort of might be a little less necessary or not regulated are policies around part section A, which is your commitment to the district, the commitments you make to the district in certain areas. Although section A does include some mandated policies like non-discrimination harassment retaliation, sexual harassment, for example. Section B is your governance section. And that's where you make statements about how you govern the district, how your body behaves, what your officers are responsible for, for example. And now we start to get into some of the sections that are, that are more required, like your finances, like your student section, like how we're going to treat our personnel, what do our personnel policies look like and why are they there? Again, sexual harassment and other harassment, non-discrimination policies live in those. I know Christine knows that we recently had to, so we had last year spent a great deal of time meeting with attorneys from the AG's office. And in particular, it was led by the attorney for, the civil rights attorney. So we expanded, this is an interesting story, but policy is just, it's never ending thing. We expanded the protected classes based on what they wanted schools to have in policy, which included federal protected classes, state protected classes and DESI protected classes, because they all vary. And now we have DESI wondering why our protected class. And now we have Desi wondering why our protected class. Categories are so broad. Well, I talked to the A G's office because they told us we had to do this, right? So we know soon to get districts on board with all that and changing their policies that the Crown Act passes. And the governor of Massachusetts wants to expand the definition of race to include. Ethnic hair and head coverings. So we had to make those changes to our policies, right? Desi was on board with that, so. So there are your many policies, Glenn, you are required by law to have, some you are not. Right, Christine?
Yeah.
This is Massachusetts and, and I have to say, while it's one of the most highly regulated states. And certainly in, in the area that we all live in, which is education. Because of that, it allows us more freedoms in many cases than a lot of other states get. For example, is it Missouri who just re-instituted corporal punishment for students? You know, you can, you can rest your bottom dollar on the fact that Massachusetts is never gonna do that. So many reasons why I'm very proud to live in Massachusetts, even though we are so highly regulated, Glenn.
Yeah, in part because we are, yeah. Well, thank you. It's helpful.
That was a long answer.
Appreciate it. Were you gonna say something, Christine?
No, thank you. No.
Christine and I have some real good discussions. We don't always agree. But she's your superintendent and you're her school committee, so it's not up to me. It's up to you all.
Yeah.
I'll just let you know, I guess, sort of what M A S C. Believe to be as best practice and so forth. And while Christine has been certainly at a different level than me, I've been, spent a lot of years myself in a public school district. And have seen how policies can play out in, in situations, you know, where you're glad you have them.
And just so the subcommittee knows, when. Best practice from M A S C is recommended. That unless our legal counsel is advising me that a different. Phrase or different steps. Should be added to policy, any of the questions I have. If the response is this is recommended best policy from M A S C, that's what the. I'm deferring to Liz on any of the questions, so.
And so Christine and I agree with that in terms of your legal counsel, because should anything ever occur. Related to a policy, and there's some concern about the legal language in your policy. The school committee is always protected from liability by following the guidance of their legal counsel.
So I reach out. Fairly frequently when needed to ask questions about any of our policies. So. You know, certainly if any of you have questions that you want clarified, but I, I do that. Anyway, especially if I am bringing forth a policy request, I reach out prior.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you, Liz, very much for joining us and giving us that overview. That's great. And I can, I think we all know this because we've all called you, Liz. We know how accessible you are. If questions come up for you that weren't addressed today or that you think of later, I know Liz will be happy to hear from you.
Yeah, we certainly do try to get back to everybody as quickly as we can. And that's why we're here. It's why we exist for you. So absolutely, call me.
Great, terrific, thanks. So on to our next agenda item, which I think is the cell phone policy, yes. Well, I'll tell you what I, when I was thinking about this, I didn't get a draft. I thought maybe I'd get a draft to you all for us to discuss today. I did not. But I thought actually it might be good for us to take some time just as a group. To share thinking about what you might like to see in a cell phone policy. It could be specific items that you care about, that you would like written into it. And also broader things, like what is the generic outline that you would like to see it follow? How detailed? Would you like it to be? What elements would you like to see it include? And I'd especially love to hear Christine's thoughts on this. Because I think you were, one of the, you were really kind of saying you were looking to the policy manual for guidance. As you were trying to address cell phones and there wasn't stuff there. So what were you looking for that wasn't there? What could we provide to you that would be helpful?
So the language, you have language in, well, language was included in the student handbooks. That cell phones are prohibited. So I guess having a policy statement around. If, if the district is going to prohibit use of cell phones during the instructional day, something like that. If, you know, obviously that, that excludes students who might have health issues. And require like students who are diabetic and may monitor their glucose through an app. Things like that, but. You know, and since you're asking. From an administrative standpoint, I think clear, but brief. One of the things that I think is very frequent in our policy manual. Is a lot of administrative information and that's not typically included in policy. So from my end, you do or don't want them, period.
Oh, okay.
If I can chime in just real quickly on that, Glenn, Christine's absolutely right. And it, it looks as you read through the Greenfield policy, in many cases, that language was added sort of for a specific purpose. A specific incident, if you will, and that's absolutely the wrong way to approach policy, right? You want a broad statement, you want administration to go off and implement in a way that works for the district at any given time.
Uh huh, okay. Great. Elizabeth and Amy, do you have thoughts?
I guess my thoughts specific to cell phone policy. Is to keep it. Really simple and to allow for the decision making around. The, the policy should be flexible enough that allows the decision making around how to handle cell phones in schools or. Devices in schools, what have you, to be at the. Discretion of the administration, because they're the ones we are paying to manage it. And they are the experts who know best about how distractions during the school day impact learning. So, you know, in my mind, a, a policy would. Say something as simple as the Greenfield School Committee supports. The administration's decision making around. The use of devices in the classrooms. And I'm just saying that off the top of my head, like. You know, during the school day, what have you, but it would be fairly simple that we want the administration to have. The ability to do what they need to do. To, you know, I'm very concerned, I continue to be concerned about learning loss. That goes beyond passing notes in class, you know, that may or may not get intercepted by the teacher. When I hear the description of teachers teaching to the tops of students' heads more than seeing their eyeballs. That to me is very symbolic of the fact that we have an issue with distractions. And I think as adults who all have cell phones, we know that that's the case, that they are distracting. And thank God they didn't exist when I was a teenager. I don't think I would be. I don't know where I would be, but I likely would not be on a school committee or working every day nine to five in a, you know, gainfully employed. I think it would have been a real problem for me, knowing how my behaviors can escalate and, and with stuff like that. So just speaking from my own personal experience, I want to balance what I see as a user of cell phone technology. As a distraction and also the tools to be able to. Deal with it in a, in a learning environment.
Nice, thanks, Amy. Elizabeth, do you have thoughts?
Um, I think it should be really specific. I think that. Being brought, I think it should be brief. I agree with all of you making it brief. I think giving it a broad swath is just a saying, just like whatever the administration wants to do, we're fine with. Is, I think that that's kind of, I don't agree with that just because. We're living in a world where we're all digitally connected and a lot of us have devices. So since we have to deal with it and we don't want them in the classroom, we just need to be really specific about what we want. I think we need to just flat out say these are not allowed during the day and then that should really just be it. Because the parents are gonna, some of the parents are gonna challenge this and talk about it quite a bit amongst themselves. And I know many parents have had instances where things have come to light that were going on in the school. Because their kids were able to film it. So I think that a lot of parents have this fear that something's gonna go on and they're not gonna be able to. Catch it and have, you know, control or be able to protect their kids. So like I'm saying that I know that that fear is in the community. So I think just leaving it nebulous is kind of irresponsible. I think we need to just be really clear. We don't want, we've all said that we don't feel comfortable having cell phones in the classrooms. The teachers have expressed that they don't want it, that it's distracting. So we need to have really clear language saying exactly when cell phones are allowed. After the final bell or whatever. I think it needs to be completely black and white. Because the parents are already having issues with what's, with the pouches that are gonna go down. I mean, I don't know if you guys get on those Facebook pages, but there are comments that are hundreds of comments deep. Threads that go on and on and on for days about how frustrated the parents are. So I think it needs to be really clean and short. And easy to digest so that there's no questions from them. So that they feel really confident that everyone's on the same page. Anything that's nebulous or like up to the discretion of whatever I think is gonna. Gonna make them feel uncomfortable. Because of the things that have been videoed and that, you know, the things that have occurred, the bullying and whatnot. So I think let's keep it as simple and as clean as possible with really clear hours of use that is not allowed. And keep it as black and white as possible.
Thank you. I guess, I don't know. I mean, I, I'm hearing people talk about specific, about being very brief. And just essentially saying cell phones in the schools. I feel like the handbooks are a useful tool in terms of getting into the nitty gritty for each school about exactly what the rules are. And the policy does not have to be as, as specific as that because it will vary by school. But a couple places my mind goes is that one of the kind of debates that came up when we were. As we've been deliberating about the pouches is what is the role of the schools in addressing? Cell phone addiction. The Centers for Disease Control has a definition for addiction, which is essentially. Ongoing use despite negative consequences. I think that you could fairly, fairly put cellphone use for most of us. In that category and certainly for young people, we're talking about negative outcomes of cellphone use. But, and then I don't know, I mean, it's just, it seemed like part where my, where I ended up landing is. The school has a limited role in addressing that. So far as we're doing social emotional learning and that might, you know, contribute to addressing some of the underlying issues. But that the schools are not, do not have the capacity for the kind of. One-on-one coaching or counseling or whatever it would take to really get to the, the root of us, of all of our students. Cell phone addictions, that's not our, the role of the schools. And the other place my mind goes is just in deciding on. Rules and programs to address this, such as our pouch. Program that we. Evaluate those, that we have some way of, of knowing like what the outcome is we're hoping to achieve and. And measuring our progress towards that. That does seem like something that I think would be. An important part of a policy on this, that we're essentially kind of on the frontier here. I mean, I think our research into what other. Communities have done around cell phone policies, there's not a ton out there. And we're, you know, maybe eventually there will be a lot of data driven. Interventions or recommendations about what to do in this situation. We're not in that, that place yet. So in the meantime, we kind of have to design our own. Metrics for what we're trying to achieve and whether we're getting there. So I don't know whether that makes sense to include it in the, I think there's a lot of thoughts that I have on this topic. And probably I might be more better off writing a long essay than putting it into a policy. But I'm not sure, so. Oh, I saw Amy's hand, I think. Yeah.
I guess. I guess the, the one other thing I would just add, because I don't think I was really articulate about it when I spoke previously is. The, the technology piece of this, I feel like anything that we write is gonna be outdated pretty quickly. I really believe that these pouches are just a fleeting thing. Because there will be another new technology that comes around fairly quickly. That replaces the need for them because of some reason we haven't even thought up yet. And I also feel like it may not just be cell phones. Students can certainly take a tablet and turn it into a text messaging device. And, and same is true for laptops and what have you. There are plenty, my point is the, the technology is always gonna be a couple of steps ahead of any policy that we write. The policy is likely to be outdated almost as soon as we implement it. And I think it's just really important that we keep it focused on. What tools we need for learning to happen successfully. That's it.
Thank you. Elizabeth?
Oh, I was just thinking about. After Amy said that she's right, like we, maybe the language should not be specifically cell phones, but should be devices. Because, I mean, I don't, I don't use my cellphone as, oh, like it's a hand computer. And while I have an addiction, I have to say my addiction is positive. I run a whole business on my cellphone. One hundred percent, I do not have a desktop at all. So I am in that youth group. Where everything is run and the whole business happens online. So when it's time to get it surgically implanted in my body, I will be the first one in that. I mean, I'm telling you, but we had people coming to make public comment who were media literacy teachers. And who, you know, spoke about the importance of digital citizenship and teaching that. And letting kids know exactly how, you know, things can go really bad. Digital devices can ruin your life. They can also, you know, allow you to invent ways to clean the ocean. I mean, it's. We can't subscribe only bad to them. So we have to find a way, since we are on the frontier, to let everybody know that we're not Luddites. We're not technologically inferior. We're not, you know, stupid people who don't understand that cell phones can like fully enhance our world. So I worry that we might be going down that road where it's just like, no, 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 no. Where in fact, we have to learn to integrate them into our lives because like, yeah, it is gonna change. There will be new devices. There will be new things that they're gonna try to do to keep cell phones from being in the schools. But we're not necessarily there yet. We don't know what it's gonna be. And the next generation is gonna sew this whole thing up in a whole different way. We're kind of really behind them. So it shouldn't sound like we don't know what we're talking about or that we're Luddites. We have to be open to technology as much as people don't wanna do it, like. That's the breaks. That's where we're living right now. So. I, I mean, the school that I'm in now, it's really clear. You don't bring your cellphone to school. You're not allowed to use it in school. That's the end of it. It has to stay in the bag. But you might need it after school to communicate with your parent. So there it is for that. I mean, it's really clear. So I don't see why it has to be much longer than that, really.
Yeah.
You know? It's acknowledged that it's needed for some things, but it's just not needed in the classroom. But then they also use technology in the classroom. And when the kids listen to music, they're doing, using the school Spotify account. So like, it's not, we're just anti-technology. It's that we're just not doing this type of technology right now. You know? So I don't wanna, I don't think we should close the whole door and. So I don't wanna, I don't think we should close the whole door and bar it and lock it and throw away the key. Because we're gonna need it eventually.
Okay, I think we should head towards wrapping up. I'd be open if people have one more lightning round, a very quick comment you wanted to share, but. My thought is that I would share a draft with you all by email by. October twenty five. So we have two weeks, you'll have two weeks to think about it before our. Meeting on it, which will include the public comment pieces that we discussed. How does that sounds for? For timeline. Okay. Any other lightning ride questions or comments people wanna throw in there? All right, hearing none, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Thank you, Liz, for being here too.
It was my pleasure and I'm sorry for the last few minutes of distraction, but this little guy.
I wondered what was bringing the big smile.
You wanna say hi, buddy?
Hey there. Nice to meet you.
That's Thomas.
Did you know you brought a big smile to Liz's face?
That's my first grandson. He made me a grandma.
Oh, wow. So cool.
Thanks for coming, Liz.
Thank you. It's always my pleasure to come anytime you want me here and certainly. You know, Christine will let me know when you start to review the sections and I will be here.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Bye.
Bye, Liz. I will second.
I vote yes.
Okay, we're adjourned. Good meeting, everybody. Thanks so much. Thanks, old Christine.